We're going to call to order the regular board meeting for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. We're meeting in the supervisors' hearing room on Melody Lane in Bisbee, Arizona. Pursuant to ARS 38431.02H, the public will have physical access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. We will begin with the, are you gonna?
I have a small one, a short one.
Yeah.
We short and sweet.
Please, please.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that will affect our community, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. That's a good one. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, the order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at any time during the meeting. The board may vote to recess into executive session for the purposes of obtaining legal advice from the board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38431.03, so paragraph A3. Members of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or via Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may attend the meeting via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda to speak. On the agenda item during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board by 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda has been published. This means that some presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may offer or may differ slightly from the attached version. So we'll begin with a roll call. District one, Crosby is here. District two.
Gomez is here.
District three, Antonori is here. We have Mr. Antonori and Ms. Gomez present. Ms. Crosby is attending via Microsoft Teams. All right, so we'll begin with a call to the public. I have first up Allison Morse. Is Allison here or online?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Okay, thanks very much. Good morning, supervisors. My name is Allison Morse. I'm an active voter from Portal. At the last Board of Supervisors meeting, there was discussion about Resolution 25-02 that you unanimously adopted. It was said then that voters with early ballots, quote, "cut in front of the line" to return their ballots on Election Day. This is not accurate. They are not moving in front of anyone standing in line as they are merely dropping off their ballots in a separate area. The Elections Department rules are very clear, and I quote, "People who are dropping off early ballots need not wait in line." It was also said multiple times that voters have six weeks to return their mail ballots. This is also not true. It is actually closer to three weeks because early ballots aren't even mailed out until less than four weeks before Election Day. Many of us live in remote parts of the county, making mail delivery very slow. The resolution itself is misleading. It states that one-fifth or 20% of mail ballots were returned on Election Day. This is three times the actual figure for the 2024 election, general election. The percentage was actually less than 6% for Cochise County and less than 8% statewide for the 2024 election. The resolution also claims that the delay in election results was attributed to signature verification. In essence, there was no delay. Our county's results were finalized four days prior to the statutory deadline. This was despite our Elections Department having to deal with an unusually long two-page ballot, a bomb threat, power outage, machine malfunctions, operator errors, and new staff and volunteers. Our county has 18 vote centers, which are open 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Election Day. In contrast, there are only five ballot locations, and they are only open 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Instead of limiting your constituents' voting options, why not make it easier for them to return their early ballots? Why not add more ballot boxes to the existing five locations and extend the hours of operation and/or make them available on weekends so working people and families have the opportunity to use them? Your constituents shouldn't be penalized for following the law and exercising their rights. They prefer voting access and convenience over speed or results. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we have another call to the public, Tricia Giradet. I hope I pronounced that right. This lady speaks often. I hope. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, you did, Supervisor Antonori.
I apologize if I did. I appreciate your time. You have, you have three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is Tricia Giradet. I live in Sierra Vista. I was reviewing your executive session note yesterday where you're going, you're discussing a draft resolution clarifying the role of the county administrator. I want to congratulate you on tackling an update of the role. Certainly looked like it was needed. Item number three, which related to the employment contract, I thought it should include changes to the employment contract, like doing a raise or anything else. And I didn't see it called out in that item, number three. Item number six dealt with representing their, themselves on their free time and in their personal time. And I was concerned that this might be construed as attempting to restrict the administrator's free speech on their personal time. I found that I had a question about that, and perhaps that is the intent, that you don't want the administrator to ever be able to speak as an independent person. I'm not sure that's right, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then the last item was number 23, where the administrator is the designated public lobbyist. And again, I was, I know that frequently a lobbying firm has been hired to do work, and it would be extremely difficult, in my opinion, for your county administrator to also be an actual lobbyist. And so I wondered how, if you hired some professionals, how the county administrator, as the designated public lobbyist, might hand off that authority if that, you know, was become necessary. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You want to answer them? No? Okay. Hey, if you're, if you're listening, feel free to shoot us an email with those questions, and I'll, I'll answer them for you. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so that is it for call to the public. I don't have a request to speak for you, so sorry about that. We're going to move on to agenda item number one through four, the consent agenda items. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent item one, right? Are we just doing?
One through four.
One through four?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the consent items one through four.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. Any discussion? None? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes 3-0. The consent agenda is approved. All right, next we'll go to agenda item number five, Ms. Gomez.
Okay. I am reading a proclamation.
First, you have to, you have to move, move it first, and then we'll, yeah.
I move that we approve a proclamation declaring April 5th through the 11th of 2025 as the week of the young child in Cochise County.
Second.
Oh, all right. Beat me to it, Tom. So, all right, we have a motion seconded. Discussion, Ms. Gomez. Go ahead.
Week of the young child, whereas all of Arizona's children deserve access to quality early care and education, ECE, environments, and whereas quality childcare programs build children's lifelong learning skills during the critical years from birth to age five, and whereas ECE teachers and childcare providers are the essential workforce that helps Arizona parents get to work or school, and whereas funding quality childcare is a smart investment that improves family well-being, strengthens communities, and grows our state prosperity, and whereas, first things first, Arizona's Association for the Education of Young Children and other community organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the 53rd anniversary of the Week of the Young Child, and whereas these organizations are working to improve equitable early childhood opportunities that provide a strong start for children in Cochise County, and whereas public policies that support ECE for Arizona's youngest learners help our families, communities, and the economy thrive. Now, therefore, I, Frank Antonori, Chairman of the Cochise Board of Supervisors, I guess this, is this correct?
Yeah, it's all of us.
Okay, do hereby, April, do you hereby proclaim April 5th through the 11th of 2025 as the week of the young child in Cochise County, Arizona, and encourage all citizens to support and invest in early care and education in our community? Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Cochise County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the week of April 5th through April 11th, 2025, to be the week of the young child in Cochise County, and urges all members of our community to support efforts that increase access for children and families to high-quality early childhood education.
Any additional discussion? All right, having heard the proclamation and the motion on the floor, all those in favor of approving the proclamation, say aye.
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 All right, motion, motion passes 3-0. All right. Next up, we have agenda item number six. Can I get a motion?
I motion to approve Resolution 25-07 establishing an invocation policy and procedure for regular meetings of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors.
Right, I'll second it. Okay. All right, so we'll go to Mr. Correa for an explanation of the resolution, please.
We received a, a letter after one of the invocations from a group in Bisbee that was concerned about whether the form of the invocation was honoring the First Amendment. So we have done some research, looked at other similar resolutions, including the Arizona Legislature that, that shared a suggestion, and created a pretty simple, straightforward resolution that brings us within the bounds of the First Amendment. So it honors the Establishment Clause and it reflects the values of the community in a way that is proper.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion? None? All right, so we have motion on the floor to approve Resolution 2507. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion passes 3-0. All right, next up, we have agenda item number seven. Can I get a motion to move Agenda seven?
I motion to approve a grant award from the Sulfur Springs Valley Electric Cooperative to the Cochise County School Superintendent for the Community Share Initiative in the amount of $20,000.
Second. Okay, probably seconded. All right, any discussion? None? Oh, we bring Ms. Clay up here to briefly explain it. Oh, you're going to give us a presentation. Oh, excellent, excellent. Okay, all right.
President and members of the board, access to community resources and connections is vital to the success of our youth, their families and educators, and the educators who support them. Unfortunately, educators and youth in Cochise County face significant barriers to assessing these human resources. The Community Share Project aims to bridge this gap by facilitating connections between educators, community partners, and bringing real-world learning into classrooms. Through the Community Share Platform, educators in Cochise County will have a digital space to connect with local professionals, businesses, and organizations. This platform will allow them to co-create engaging learning experiences that spark student engagement, curiosity, and learning. Educators can create profiles, post projects and events ideas, and find community members willing to serve as guest speakers, mentors, project advisors, or provide internship opportunities. Community partners will also create profiles on the platform, offering their skills, knowledge, and experience to students through mentoring, project-based learning, guest speaking, and volunteer and internship opportunities. This initiative provides a unique opportunity for community members to share their expertise with the next generation. I believe this initiative will foster economic development and connect people with similar goals across the county, increasing the likelihood of economic independence for our students and economic success for our county. It will also provide motivation, direction, purpose, and opportunity for our future leaders, inspiring them to stay in Cochise County and continue our legacy. And with that, members of the board, I just wanted to just, these slides basically represent what I've just said. It has to do with our youth, family, businesses, and communities. It's resources. It facilitates real-world learning in the classroom. I always tell our businesses and community that they are the whipped cream and cherries of education. The educators educate, but to continue that education has to be the community. They have to find who they're, I call them mini-me's within the community and connect with them, and this is a great way to do that. Again, sharing their expertise with the next generation will inspire them to stay in Cochise County. We don't want to export our amazing students to these other counties. No offense to any other county, but we want to keep our precious, amazing future leaders down here in Cochise County, and educators can't do that alone. We have to do that together. Subject to your questions.
Um, yes, I have a question. So is this program going to be in like every, say like Douglas and Elfrida, you know, Tombstone, you know, throughout all the different communities?
So Community Share is actually nationwide. Pima County has current, is currently using it, and we will do it throughout Cochise County. And eventually, as the platform grows, we will be able to also work with Pima County on their Community Share platform that, so that we can have resources that we might not have in Cochise County for entrepreneurs and other leadership that may be willing to help our students in Cochise County.
So is this like a platform that, like if I was Douglas High School, I would hear about the program, and I would go onto a platform and then connect that way?
Yes. Yeah, it's almost like a human library, if you want to think about it that way. And they can register on the library. They can have a profile. They can enter an account. And then once they're on that platform, they can access any of, any of that information inside that human library.
And this is for charter schools, right?
Yep.
Everybody?
Everybody.
Okay.
Including our students who are home schooled. This is all. This includes all the students, every student, whether they're private, public, or homeschool.
Okay, very good.
All right, any other discussion? None? All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the grant for the Sulfur Springs Valley Co-op to the Superintendent of Schools for the Community Share Initiative. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Did you say aye? I could barely, okay, motion passes 3-0. Yes, Ms. Dr. Clay, yeah.
So I just would like to add that we are challenging the, we're challenging our people here in the county. Once we get it open, that you all, all of you, go ahead and put your information on there and get these students into this part of the legislature or this part of leadership. Every one of you are important to us. That's fleet, that's IT, that's Board of Supervisors, that's legal, that's everybody. I think we should be the ones who lead this in the county, which will get everybody else to do it. Thank you.
I agree.
All right, we'll move on then to agenda item number eight. So get a motion.
I motion to approve a grant award for the Sulfur Springs, from the Sulfur Springs Valley Electric Cooperative to the Cochise County School Superintendent for the Student Advisory Council in the amount of $19,993.
Second.
All right, we have motion, discussion. Dr. Clay, you want to comment on this one too?
Yes, sir. The Student Advisory Council aims to empower students who are central to the mission of the Cochise County School Superintendent's Office by providing them with a platform to voice their opinions at the, at the county level. This council helps students develop leadership and teamwork skills while addressing local educational challenges through effective communication. By fostering civic engagement, the initiative encourages students to drive positive change within their schools and communities. Additionally, the funds will support field trips, training, and conferences where students can engage with state-level leaders and enhance their interpersonal skills through peer-to-peer and peer-to-professional interactions. Students apply to join the council, and ongoing recruitment efforts ensures representation, representation across the county. The Student Advisory Council has identified bullying as their primary concern and is currently developing an anti-bullying awareness campaign. They plan to present, to present their campaign to this board in the near future, followed by a presentation to the State Board of Education in July. Currently, we have 15 representatives from the following schools: Benson One, Buena One, Colonel Smith One, Huachuca Mountain Elementary One, Joyce Clark Middle School Two, Naco Elementary One, Palominas Elementary One, Pierce Two, Peptech, Sierra Vista Two, St. David Two, Town and Country One. If approved, this donation would significantly expand the capabilities of the Student Advisory Council. It would provide essential, essential funds for travel, learning materials, in-person meetings, training, conferences, and their anti-bullying awareness campaign. Here are the slides that back up my statement. This is to give students a voice, develop leadership, communication skills. Civic engagement is very important and drive positive change in schools and communities. This is what the funds will support. These are our students. We still meet once a month, Saturday at 11 o'clock. That was not our choice. It was theirs. And subject to your questions.
I'd have a question, Chairman. I really want to see like a student from every school, Bisbee, you know, McNeil, even Apache, Douglas. And I am, this is like, you know, one of my passions is to get kids involved in government and become new leaders. And, you know, I think there's just so much room for advancement of these kids to understand how laws are made, how, how to run, you know, what it takes, you know, the service that you give, the, what you give back to your community, and, 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 you know, the gratification that you can actually make change. So I would be very interested in helping any way I can, so make sure that, you know, if you need anything, if you need me to get people, I'm going to talk about this a lot to all the different people that I know, especially my brother-in-law, who's on the school board in Douglas, and to other, the communities in District Two. So, you know, when you guys are ready, let me know so I can sign up, because I like to have, you know, yeah, either have someone as an intern or shadow me, whatever you've got, whatever they would like. I want to be available, so I'm really excited about this and really excited that you're bringing this to the community. So thank you.
That would be fantastic. We would love that. Thank you.
So don't forget, I'm here for you guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to make a comment. I'd like to thank Sulfur Springs Valley Electric Cooperative. Clearly, this is a, a business in this, in this county that sees the investment potential by investing in the future workforce of this county. And I think that's clear by their $40,000 commitment that they just made to education in Cochise County and supporting the youth of this county so that they may grow up to be productive members of society, working hard and paying taxes. So with that, I have no further discussion. So anybody else? None? All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve Agenda item number eight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0. Move on to Agenda item number nine. Can we get a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution 25-06 to approve three vote centers for the 2025 special primary and general elections for Congressional District Seven, as listed on the attached exhibit, and authorize the Elections Director to make substitutions as necessary prior to each election in the event that a vote center replacement needs to be made in accordance with ARS 16-411.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. We have seconded. I have one request to speak. Actually, no, they don't request to speak. They just want to make note that they support the agenda item, and they agree with it. So that was, that was it. So any discussion will go to Marty. Do you want to say anything? Nope. Your, your call. I mean, just you.
Supervisor Antonori?
Oh. Yes? No? Okay, we have a... All right, go ahead, Ms.
Chairman Antonori and supervisors, I ask that you approve Resolution 25-06 to approve three vote centers, Bisbee, Palominas, and Douglas, for the 2025 special primary and special general election for Congressional District Seven. That will be conducted on July 15th and September 23rd.
All right, we all know this was due to the passing of Congressman Rahalva, and this is to fill his seat. Any discussion or questions for the Elections Director?
No, I just think that it's really important to those who are listening that live in, from Douglas, Purville, Bisbee, Naco, and part of Palominas, that this is our chance to be heard. If we get out and vote, whichever way you may want to vote, at least get out and vote, because if we have a strong showing, then the next representative, whoever it may be, cannot ignore us. Because if we are a power play, because there's 17,000 of us that can vote, this is really an opportunity to make sure that whoever wins hears us and knows that we're here and then can represent us. Because I really feel that we haven't been represented before in this small little piece that got gerrymandered into, you know, Pima County and Yuma. So I think a lot of times representatives take us for granted, and I think it's a time that we can really stand up and make a difference and have our voices heard. So I encourage everyone, please come out and vote. And I gather, Marty, right, that this is going to be on our website. And a lot of people are confused, kind of like, you know, if you're north of Purville, does that mean you're in CD seven or CD six? But they'll be able to go on the web and figure out exactly what district they're in, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And if they have any questions, they can call your office?
They can call the Elections Department, or they can call the Recorder's Office also to find out what district they're in.
Okay. Do you want to just, for the people that are, you know, listening, kind of just go over the dates again?
Okay, so we have 17,775 active voters in those precincts, of which 12,733 are on active early voting. There's 12 precincts that are in this congressional district. They are four, five, six, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 18, 19, 20, and 52. The deadline to register to vote for this election is June 16th. Early voting begins on June 18th, and that is also the day that early ballots are mailed. We will have two early voting dates on Saturdays in Douglas, which will be June 21st and June 28th. July 7th will be the deadline. July 7th will be the deadline to request an early ballot by mail, and of course, Election Day will be July 15th for this first election, and the vote centers will be open, Bisbee, Douglas, and Palominas, from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
And in Bisbee, they can vote during that whole six weeks? The early voting night, they could come in and vote?
It'll start June 18th, and they will have until Election Day, or the Friday weekend.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few words, if I may.
Sure, Mr. Crosby.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that Ms. Gomez's comments are, uh, well-taken, and as to the importance of Cochise County in any of our elections, and we are indeed taking it for granted, but I think that may, uh, change, uh, due to, uh, uh, recent events. And I also want to express all our appreciation to Ms. Renteria for her continued diligence in her job.
Yes. Thank you.
Good job. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none? All right, we have a motion to approve agenda item number nine. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, uh, three zero. The resolution is adopted. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number 10. Uh, can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve Intergovernmental Agreement 24-0010929-1, Whitewater Drawbridge Street Number Zero, is that street or state?
Structure.
Structure.
Structure number.
Whitewater Drawbridge Structure Number 08109, between Arizona Department of Transportation and Cochise County, in the amount of $127,305, with a local match of $7,635, effective upon signing of all parties through completion of the project.
Second.
All right, uh, we go to Ms. Watkins to explain the IGA.
Chairman, members of the board, this is the Whitewater Bridge is a timbered, one-lane decked bridge on, that was constructed in 1937. It's a milepost 15.7 on Rucker Road, and has a weight limit of five tons. So this is a scoping grant that we can scope the project, that we will eventually get the bridge replaced.
Is it going to be replaced with a similar bridge or a concrete bridge?
Concrete.
Concrete, that's what I figured. Okay, good. Any other discussion?
No.
None?
No, sir.
All right. Oh, did you have one, Mr. Crosby?
Oh, I said, no, sir.
Oh, okay, sorry. All right, great. There's a delay. All right, uh, no further discussion, um, having been moved, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, the IGA is approved. All right, we'll now move on to agenda item number 11. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we approve CTR 063847, Amendment 2, Arizona Prescription Drug Overdose Prevention Program, between the Arizona Department of Health Services and Cochise County Health and Social Services, in the amount of $247,200, $247,270, effective September 30th, 2024.
Second.
All right, um, any discussion? We'll go to Ms. Hegel for a brief explanation.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Um, this amendment is brought forth to you today to, uh, continue the IGA as usual. Um, all deliverables will stay the same, dollar amount has stayed the same as last year. Um, the only difference is that we added a 2.6 FTE, uh, to this year's amendment, and as mentioned earlier, the, um, deliverables will remain the same, so we will continue with our linkage as to care program, our naloxone distribution, overdose fatality, and, um, any trainings that we provide to the county.
Any discussion?
No.
None? Okay, hearing the motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, uh, three zero. All right, um, we'll go to state and federal legislation. Uh, I don't have anything to report, they canceled the meeting last weekend, so I haven't gotten an update. I did talk to Senator Gallin yesterday, telling me that, uh, budget negotiations are still ongoing and not looking so hot. Um, also told me the water legislation negotiation is not looking so hot, uh, so they're, they're, they're struggling with trying to find compromise, uh, with the governor's office on both of those key things, so I think they might be in for a long session, which impacts the county, because our budget is related to the approval of state matching funds and HERF revenue and everything else that's part of that, uh, budget breakdown, so it could cause us issues and challenges with getting our budget approved. Um, so with that, with, other than that, uh, I had nothing else further to report. Uh, do you have anything, Ms. Gilman, that you want to add?
I'll just inform the board, um, of a few, a few items. Uh, we are continuing with our recruitment for, uh, the Development Services Director that closes this Friday, and we are in the process of conducting interviews for the Elections Director, which we will then bring forward to the board for further discussion. Uh, we are also, I, from ADOT, from the Arizona Department of Transportation, we are awaiting the publication of the design concept report for the Connector Road, uh, that's completed. I understand they're just getting their engineer signatures and stamps all lined up before they publish a link, so I'll be sure to send that to everyone on the board as well, and publish it on our website, or, or Facebook for the public to understand what that report is.
All right, uh, any current events, anybody would like to discuss District 1? Mr. Crosby?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to remind everybody that, uh, traditionally, the governor has three times the amount of money that is administrative by, that is administered by the legislature, and I, if you happen to talk to Senator Gallin or one of our other representatives before I do, it would be nice to know what those figures are likely to be. That is all I have. Thank you.
Gomez, do you have anything?
Nothing today.
Nothing today? All right, I don't have anything yet. Uh, so the next, uh, meeting will be this afternoon, it will be a work session at 1:00 PM in the hearing room to discuss, uh, and possible direction of the board regarding the budget for the Sheriff's Office and their financial position. So, any last minutes, nothing?
Nothing.
All right, hearing no further, this meeting is adjourned.